Good evening. I'd like to call this Concord Township Zoning Commission Tuesday, June 4th, meeting to order. We've got a pretty full agenda this evening and Heather, if you could start us off and call the roll.
Mr. Eiffelase?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Ruppert?
Here.
Mr. Schindler?
Here.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Here. Okay. Next, we'd like to do an approval of the minutes for the March 5th meeting. Where's our minute man? You weren't there, was that the one you had to extend?
I was not here.
Oh, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, so I've got four ayes and one abstention on the minutes, so we'll consider those approved. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Frank?
None, Mr. Chairman.
None? Okay.
Quite.
Mr. Ruppert?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Feelys?
Nothing, thank you.
I've had nothing too, it's been kinda quiet.
Good.
Which I think can be deemed as a good thing. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the zoning inspector report. Heather?
Okay.
Please indulge us.
Good evening. Just a brief report this evening, just to update you on the zoning permit activity for the month of May. Our office approved 42 zoning permit applications for various residential projects, bringing the year-to-date up to 172 permits. No dwellings this past month, but we're at 19 new dwelling units for the year.
Just real quick Heather, on the number of permits, just so we're, you know, how does that break down, you know, as far as, you know, what, is that just mostly just projects like fences and decks and outbuildings?
Yeah, so I do have a breakdown.
Oh, okay.
About 12 of those were for fences, 11 were for accessory buildings, 5 were for new decks, and then 3 additions, 3 above-ground pools, 3 in-ground swimming pools, and then just a couple other miscellaneous retaining walls, signs, a new business went over in the Concord Plaza, they took over a vacant space, the hemp store, I think it is called, it's another retail business. So that was pretty much the breakdown for the month.
Good.
And then at the last BZA meeting in May, I did mention to you there were a couple applications for the Pacific Bell, Taco Bell, those were approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and subsequently you will be getting at your next meeting, a site plan review application for the Taco Bell project that's proposed between the Key Bank and Waffle House over there on Crow Road.
Okay.
If B.
And that's really all I have this evening.
That's all you have?
Yeah.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. Public participation, do we have anybody in the audience this evening that would like to address the zoning commission this evening regarding non-application issues? You'll get your turn. Anybody wanna come up and speak? Okay. We don't have any public participation, I assume we don't have anybody on the phone? So, okay. New business, now you're up. We have a site plan review application number 58 that's been submitted by Crossroads Health for an adult group home to be located at 7480 Auburn Road, also known as the current parcel ID 08A 019000-013-0. So, we have members in attendance today, if you could, as you speak today, I would appreciate if you would identify yourself, give your name and address for the record, okay? That way we have the information. Please keep in mind that the microphone does not amplify, it's just for the people at home that are watching on, or the video recording, so if you, please speak loudly, clearly, because, you know, it does not go through any speakers in the room. Please introduce yourself and...
So I'm Mike Sirdanek, I'm with CBLH Designs, who are the architect on this project.
Okay.
So this is Crossroads Health, and I think we're calling the North Coast House, but we might change name on that.
Sorry.
Yep.
Okay, alright, sorry. Do I need to stand in front of this?
No, that's, the microphone is for the people, you know, for the recording, so...
So, what I wanted to do, where I wanted to start was explaining kinda where we're at and sort of why we're proposing to do it. So when they purchased the property, this building turned, it's two levels, so the ground level is at two different levels, and to try to make this an improved, sufficiently improved building for the use that we need, we wanna make it, the first floor, the ground floor, fully accessible. So what that means is the highlighted portion, we're looking to remove and then to rebuild it in a very similar place to where it's at right now. Slightly deeper, slightly wider, but setback from the building, or from the road just a little bit more, but essentially, in a lot of ways, looking very similar to the way it does right now. So, the intention is to use the same type of siding, basically match the look, but clean it up and sort of make it look new, even though only the portion of it would be new, the rest would be existing and renovated. So in doing that, the intention would be to raise this portion of the grade, for when we raise that floor, we need to raise the grade ornament, especially the backyard, a little bit in the front yard, a little bit to the north, we'll have to do some work on the grade. We would provide two new walks for accessibility and egress, and then we would look to also, based on the impact of that, there's a pavilion that's right about here, and we would look to push that sort of back. By push it, I mean take it down and look to rebuild that in the future. So as a choir, we build a masonry crash closure, which is down here. We would clean up the parking lot a little bit, we think the edge needs a little bit of work and some repair of this rapid, of course, for the heating and solar to be used. And again, essentially trying to more or less match the aesthetics of what currently exists. And then for the landscaping considerations, so there's plenty of vegetation on the property, so to a great extent, we look to leave what's existing, but on the north property line, we want to add a fence that's eight foot tall from sort of the back corner up to the front face of the building, and then four foot tall from the front face of the building forward until we get to that tree line. We would, in the front of the building, put some raised beds with some trees there, and then we would provide some screening of vegetation for the mechanical units on the south line, so... In a nutshell, that's what we're looking to do, so to us, it's sort of like improving what's there, unfortunately, we have to take a little bit of it down, put some of it back up, and try to do it right, to make it look like, and function like a new building. Happy to take any questions and talk through anything else that anybody would need.
Okay. Richard, any questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, thank you. Could you just describe the function?
Oh, it's a...
Building function space, what are you doing?
Sorry, 16-bed group home, so it's an adult group home, it will be professionally monitored, I guess, 24/7, so professional staff all the time, and it's a, the stays, and I should probably be a little bit careful on the length of time that the stays are, but it's not come in and come out, the stays are a little bit longer, but not permanent.
You indicated, what was difficult to discern from the drawings is what's being removed and what isn't, until I looked at the architectural side.
Yeah, and I didn't print out a big version of the floor plan, but that shows a really clean dashed line, a thick dashed line of exactly the existing.
Yes, okay.
But it's, the highlighted portion is the new portion.
New portion. You described that you, the setback, it was changing, but it looks exactly the same as the existing.
It's very similar.
Very close?
Yeah, and again, I mean...
So the setback, setback from the road is relatively the same?
It's relatively the same, it's just slightly back, only because we wanted to make sure that we weren't making it any worse, so we push it back just a little bit more than it currently exists.
Okay. And then lastly, could you describe, what is the rehabilitation of the other wing? What is being done? The rehabilitation of the other wing?
Of the existing building?
Yes.
Okay. So, the intention is, to the extent we can, we wanna leave all the windows that are there, the intention is to try to reuse the siding, whether it actually stays in place, or we have to pull some of it off and replace it, and maybe mix and match. I think there's a decent chance we'll end up replacing it all, but we would make it essentially match what's there.
Okay.
So we would want to make sure that there's appropriate vapor barrier, again, we'll look at things like the roof, if we have to replace or patch the roof, we would do that. There are currently four skylights, I think we're gonna end up having to remove one, we would fill that in and patch it, or I think there's a decent chance we'll end up replacing all the shingles, because we do want it to make it look like it all matches, you know, when we're all done.
Sure. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Peterson, any questions?
Yeah, a question on the parking lot, it looks like you only have seven or eight spaces, is that strictly staff?
So it's eight spaces, there are 16 beds, so we need four, one for every four, so that's four, and then there are four staff at most.
Okay, what about visitor parking?
There are almost no visitors.
Okay.
And the staff, it's very rare that they even have all the staff there at one time, so we actually think it's probably more than we need, but...
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Ruppert, any questions?
Could you explain first floor, or ground level, floor plan, and then lower level?
So, cur plan, this has been through some iterations, we would love to put a full basement in, if we can do that, we'll intend to do that, we're showing the lower level, or the basement, under the new, which is here, and it's to your right on the floor plan, as an alternate, so in other words, it's a crawl space, base bid, if we can afford it as an alternate, we would do a full basement. So if we're able to do the full basement, we might look to finish some of that, but the primary function is all on the first floor or the ground level, so that's where all the residents would live, that's where the main offices would be.
And that's where staff is too?
Yes, yes. The only thing that we're showing in the lower level is a staff break room right now, and a restroom that goes along with that, yeah.
And you're saying, excuse me, I'm sorry, so you're saying that the basement is not, you haven't decided yet that you're gonna go full basement?
It's a budget issue, so depending on how the bids either come in, or depending on the construction methodology that we use, if we can make it a full basement, we want to, and we would love to be able to finish out a little bit more of that space, so. It won't change the function of the first floor at all, so the first floor is basically set, the lower level, if we can, we would love to give a little bit more usable space down there, that's all.
Right.
Okay. Now that, the full basement would go under the new layout?
Yes.
Okay, so without the full basement, what's the foundation look, did you have to rip up the existing foundation?
Yeah.
You do.
Yeah, if you look at the outline on the first, on the ground level floor plan, if you see that thick dashed line?
Yeah.
So you see how it's not quite deep enough? We could've tried to make it work, but if we did that, we would've had to put like another leg coming up, and it would've used up a lot more of the green space, and a lot of things like that, so...
Thank you. That's it for me, sir.
Mr. Schindler?
All the questions I would've had, you already addressed, so I'm fine.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. I have no questions, it looks like a good opportunity, it looks like a good plan, it looks like that, anytime we're improving on with existing structure, and, you know, adding to and enhancing, I think that's a good idea, so, you know, it's performance. I want the record to reflect that we did receive, we have a staff report, I don't know if you received that copy of the staff report, but with that staff report, we had some various agencies that gave input on the project, we had zoning staff comments, we also had comments from the Lake County Storm, you know, Storm Water Management Department, and we also had comments from the Lake, from the Concord Township Fire Department, and then in this, under the staff recommendations, they kind of condensed all that down into some recommendations, and basically, the staff is recommending a conditional approval based on these conditions, I just wanna review these with you, make sure you understand what they are, and that these are conditions that must be met in order to, you know, proceed with the project. Number one, on the existing condition sheet, part A, show the rest of the building footprint, floor elevations, finished grades at the corners?
Yes.
Good with that?
Understood, yeah.
All right, B would be to show if any part of the building will be removed or demolished?
Understood.
Okay. Number two, on the schematic plan sheet, we want, they want to, A, show the proposed fence along the north property line, which you had highlighted in your presentation, B, show no parking sign next to the north side of the building to maintain a fire lane, okay with that?
Yes.
All right, and then C, update the square footage of the proposed building to match the final architectural plans.
Yes.
With that, okay? All right, and then number three, we have a couple of bullet points there, A, on the grading plan sheet, A, show finished grades on the corners of the building, okay? B would be to show the new location of the relocated pavilion, all right? C would be to differentiate the proposed and existing grades better. D would be, since the rear yard sidewalk will act as a conveyance channel and direct water towards the hillside, I recommend a turf reinforcement padding at the end of the sidewalk and towards the hill to protect against surface erosion.
Yes.
Good with that? All right? And then E, show proposed spot grades along the edge of the newly proposed asphalt, okay? Good with that? And then F, can there be a slight swale installed just northwest of the dumpster to direct the water southwesterly, so some of the water does not flow onto 74 Auburn Rose property?
Yes.
Got that covered? Good. Okay. Point number four, on the utility plan sheet, under bullet point A, there are some storm sewers shown extending from the southwest corner of the building, include what size these are, pipe material, inverts, and include what they appear to drain, i.e. downspouts, footers, etc.
Yes.
Good with that? Okay. And then, point number five, which is on the SWPPP sheet, point A, include details for filter rock, concrete washout, and seating tables?
Yes.
All right? B, to show and list a proposed disturbance for the project?
Yes.
Okay. C, to show the pre and post impervious area for the project to determine the net difference?
Yes.
Good with that? All right? And D, to include pre and post curve number values for the project?
Yes.
Good with that? Okay. And then number six would be submit final building plans for the pavilion and primary building?
Yes.
All right. So if you're, if you are in a position to agree to, adhere to, all the conditions that have been set forth, then that will help us make our decision a lot easier.
Yes, we agree.
Okay. I know you folks are here, I don't know who you are, but if you would like, you're more than welcome to come up and address the board, if you have any information you'd like to share with us, who you are, what your role in this project is, you're more than welcome to come up and speak. Please state your name and address for the record too.
Shana Jackson, I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Crossroads Health, address is 150 Radley Drive, Paintsville, Ohio. Just wanted to kind of be here publicly to be able to say, we understand all of the additional conditions, and as CEO, will make sure to adhere to those things as part of the conditional use permit, so...
Super, thank you.
Hi, I'm Alice Aiden, I live at 135 Coventry Court in Auburn, Ohio.
Okay.
I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Crossroads Health, involved with the management of the project, and as Shana said, we've read through everything that you've proposed that we do, and we agree.
Okay, so you don't see any issues with the conditions and everything that's been put together by the zoning department and all the associated agencies?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you, yeah, thank you for coming up, we appreciate you.
Of course.
Sir, any additional information, anything you'd like to add to the record on this project at this point? Okay?
Chairman, if I may, one additional question.
Sure, absolutely.
You just went through.
They're here.
If I may, there are details for the asphalt pavement and asphalt pavement base repair, but the notes indicate that the asphalt pavement will to remain.
So it's as needed, so...
It is as needed, okay.
So the northern edge here, you can kind of see there's kind of a double line.
Yeah.
Based on the survey, it looks like it's really jagged, we think that there might just be overgrowth there.
Okay.
So either we're gonna repair that, or we're just gonna clean it up, so depending on whichever it needs.
Was there a consideration to put a concrete apron perhaps, instead of asphalt?
So, the intention is not to, again, we are looking to put a fence right above that, so...
No, I meant the apron, the actual entrance, the apron, the driveway apron.
Oh, the driveway apron, we believe that's...
It's in the right of way, just leave it as is.
We believe it's in very good shape, so we didn't want to touch that, yeah.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
They're here.
Okay. Heather, any comments? Counsel, any comments? Okay, thank you. All right, I guess at this point then, I would be willing to entertain a motion in the affirmative.
Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve, where's the gentleman?
Number 58.
To approve site plan review application number 58, as submitted, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, have a motion made?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second, Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ruppert?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Mr. Eiffelase?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lingenfelter?
Yes. Let the record reflect, we have five ayes, no nays, no abstentions, so the site plan application has been approved, and you are good to move forward on your project, and good luck, we look forward to seeing the finished product.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Unless you wanna hang out and watch the rest of the meeting?
You know, it's good stuff.
It's gonna get real, it's gonna get real interesting here, so, you know, I don't know, you might be disappointed you missed out on it.
Well, we're excited to show as we move through the process, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
Okay. Item number two, under the new business agenda, is a memo from zoning inspector regarding potential amendments to Section 5, Definitions in Sections 15, Residential Districts. We have that memorandum here?
Yep.
Heather, you wanna highlight things for us?
Sure, I'd be happy to. If you recall, at the last meeting, we had a discussion, a resident came and approached the board, who's here this evening as well, and brought up some issues, and had some suggestions for this board to consider taking on, and we had a further discussion regarding whether or not we wanted to potentially put some limitations on the size of garages that are attached to dwellings, in order to make sure that, you know, the primary use of a residential property that's being used for a single-family dwelling, is still gonna be that the single-family dwelling portion of the building is primary to the storage area, i.e. an attached garage. So, I, some of the amendments that I have in front of you this evening include changes to a few of the definitions, and then also some of the actual regulations in Section 15. So if you look at the definitions, basically, we're proposing a new definition for accessory building or use, and eliminating the existing definitions, which basically refer to the accessory building as strictly detached from the principal building, but the way this is written now, the accessory building could technically be attached or detached, is same for the use. And then also, for the definition of garage, or private garage, you look, it's number 85, sorry, I'm flipping through, trying to find it, the new number 85 potentially, would be to amend that definition, because right now, it strictly is referring to a detached accessory building, or a portion of the principal, I guess, but we are proposing for it to just say, "an accessory building designed to store," and then continue reading on that. So there's a couple minor changes there, and then in Section 15, this is kind of more the meat of like what people would be looking at, if they were trying to figure out, okay, what size garage am I allowed to have? A lot of people don't look at the definitions, the definitions are really important, but typical residents, contractors, they just go straight to the standards, so this is a little bit more, it's easier for you to understand. But amendment number two was actually Section 1503, and this also had some, or 1502, rather, I'm sorry. Under the 1502 use regulations, just clarifying that these permitted uses and conditional uses in that table of uses are actually the principal permitted uses and principal conditional uses, just to make sure that these coincide with the definitions, and then also in the table itself, updating those headings there. But then specifically in 1503, potentially changing this to include the term accessory use, specific standards, and then under here, you'll see kind of the meat of what I was proposing. So, the new number six would potentially be that the, "no accessory building shall be erected to a height in excess of that of the principal building in which it is incident." So therefore, if the accessory building was attached to the dwelling, it could be no taller than the roof portion of the dwelling, it could be the same, just not taller, or if it is a detached accessory building, scale-wise, we wanna make sure that, so that that accessory building does not exceed the height of the main building on the lot, the single-family That would likely be, like in a two-story house, that probably really wouldn't be an issue, but in a one-story house, you could potentially have an accessory building that exceeds the height of the single-story.
Yeah, if you have like a garage for a recreational vehicle, or something like that.
Yes.
This can get pretty tall.
Yeah. The other changes that I was proposing is to maybe eliminate this table that we have in here, and just putting it into words, so that's kind of what number seven is, just restating that in the R1, R4, R6, and 8, that those lots that are two acres in area are permitted to have no more than one detached accessory building not to exceed a total of 1,024 square feet, which is exactly the same way we regulate it now. Number eight would be in the R1, 4, 6, and 8 districts, lots two acres and larger in area are permitted to have detached accessory buildings not to exceed a total of 1,532 square feet.
How did we come up with 1,532 square feet?
I'm not sure where that figure came from, that was probably written, I think, in like 2000, at least, it was before I was here, I don't, I'd say at least 2011, if not before that. So I can't answer that, I'm not sure where that came, the 1,532 came from.
You know how big 1,532 is? Pick a width, 30 feet, 30 by 50, that's 1,500 square feet. That's huge.
Yeah.
35 by 44. 1,532 square feet is a big building. And we're here saying it can't be bigger than the first floor footprint. I think there's a conflict here. Okay?
Yeah.
We say here, R1, 4, 6, and 8, two acres and larger, detached accessory building not to exceed 1,532, and down here, the square footage of any accessory building attached to or detached from the principal building, on a lot, shall not exceed the square footage of the living area on a ground level of the principal building. Which one is it? 1,532, or is it the area of the first floor?
Well, the way I read it, and I don't know if Brady wants to chime in, is that you have to comply with both, like you can't exceed the 1,532, however, if you live in an 800-square-foot house on the first floor, you can't exceed 800 square feet.
Makes sense.
But, just so, like, higher of our minimum living area for a ranch, for new homes, obviously, if there's existing homes out there, we'd have to look at that at that time, but if someone's gonna build a new ranch today in Concord, it has to be at least 1,200 square feet of living area. And so, I guess technically, if they wanted, and they were on a two-acre lot... And so I guess technically, if they wanted, and they were on a two-acre lot, you know, they could have a twelve hundred square foot detached garage as well. Is doing these updates, I really didn't scrutinize the sizes of the buildings that we are already allowing. We could do that. I was just trying to put the framework in on getting a handle on relating it to the living area, but we could continue the work session to talk about where did these numbers come from, too, if you guys want to dive into that. Does the ten twenty-four, a lot of contractors ask me where we got that number, because it doesn't work with the way that materials or trusses are built now. It's like it's putting them over four square feet or something. I can't remember what the figures are. But we could start looking at the sizes, too, that we're permitting, and further, you know, refine those, if that's something that the board wanted to do.
Well, if we always stuck to the living area, no matter what, we wouldn't have to worry about exceeding things that would be too much in excess, right? If we stick everything with just the living area, then we don't have to worry about playing with numbers. Like, we're playing with numbers now. There'll always be a conjunction with the living area of the dwelling on the first floor.
But could go up to these maximums as well.
True, but I take a harm, and if I understand you correctly, that would really be exceeding quite a large area in relation to the living area, correct?
Correct. Yes.
So if we stay within the living area of a dwelling, I think we would probably address the issues you have, and we still wouldn't put the restriction on the builder of the unit that you're running into right now.
I'm sorry.
Correct?
Can you say that again?
No, I'm sorry.
Just want to make sure I understand you.
I'm just saying, if we stick to the size of the unit to stay within the living area of a dwelling, the building, that would be, the number would always be consistent with the living area. Wouldn't exceed it to a point where it's so large, where the builders themselves say you're putting a visual, like you said, four feet or something on to it, if I understand you correctly, and we don't, they don't want to go that way. So if we stick to the living area all the time, there wouldn't be a conflict. Correct?
I think we ought to have one restriction. And I think, I think it should be a square footage of the living area at ground level. I think that's a good thing to have, even though I don't agree with it, but if we're going to have anything, I think it should be the square footage of the living area on the first floor.
For the attached?
Attached.
Garage, or what about if it's a freestanding, or?
Attached or detached. Because I think we have two numbers now, fifteen thirty-two and square footage of the area, the living area. We've got two, two things.
Oh, based on, you mean because of the lot size difference?
No.
So because the reason why we have the two figures now is we're saying that if you have one acres, you can only have a thousand and twenty-four square feet.
Okay.
But if you, or less than, I'm sorry, if you have less than two acres, you're allowed to have the thousand and twenty-four square feet. But if you're over two acres, you can have the fifteen thirty-two.
So why do we have square footage of the living area? Why, where does that one come in?
The point of, what we were trying to do is, is to try to make sure that any attached or detached garage didn't exceed the size of the main floor of the living area.
Wouldn't be bigger than the house.
Yeah.
So why do we have the fifteen thirty-two then?
That's a maximum, no matter how, how big the house is. In other words, if you had three thousand square feet, you don't want to have a three thousand square foot addition, right?
Three thousand square foot ranch.
Right. So that'd be big, but you wouldn't want a three thousand square foot attachment to that as a garage or accessory building, correct? Why not limit that to three thousand square foot house with fifteen hundred and whatever, thirty-two square feet maximum that could be added to that?
Yeah, I guess I still have the question where fifteen thirty-two came from.
Well, pick a number, whatever it should be, but somewhere around there. I don't know where that came from. The ten twenty-four has been there. I put, I built an accessory building in ninety-nine, and it was, ten twenty-four was the max.
How was it?
Back then.
Fifteen thirty-two is big.
Yeah, but it's also two acres.
Yeah.
So.
It's all relative.
I think when you look at the fact, you know, I mean, if you're doing it on a smaller lot, then I, then I understand the concern, but it's got, they got to have at least two acres to put it, to put a fifteen, and it's limited to fifteen hundred square feet. So, which I, I personally, it's a big building, but some people have a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And you got a lot of things you want to store.
They collect things.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that allows them the option to go to that level, and it is a big building, I get it. But if it's maintained at a height level that is consistent with the main building, and it's detached, it's, you know, in order to achieve that, and they're on two-plus acres, I don't see that as being, see, my concern is what we're dealing with, what has brought this whole thing to the forefront, you know, and that is, that is somebody that took advantage of the regulations, the way they were written, and did something that, in my opinion, is a little unsightly and a little bit intrusive on the neighboring properties. Now, if you got two acres, and they want to do that, then it might be, it won't, I don't think it would be as as intrusive on the neighbors as this scenario, where this guy's got this gigantic building, you know, built on a much smaller lot, but because it's attached, he was able to do what he did. So we're trying to prevent that from happening again, which I think makes perfectly good sense. So you kind of, you know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. So we're going to make sure we don't get fooled twice. So I think that's a good thing. I think addressing this is the right thing to do. I don't have a problem with the sizes, with, based on the lot size, and the, you know, and the square footage of the home as being a guideline. I think that helps. Put some numbers on, instead of just having some arbitrary number just thrown out there, like you were saying, like fifteen thirty-two. Okay, great, whatever, you know, but I think it, I think it allows us, you know, allows the property owner to have a little bit of wiggle room, to build something a little larger if they want it, without being too restrictive. And also allows the residents surrounding the area to have some assurance that somebody's not going to come in and build an airport hangar, you know, on their property, and then they have to look at that all the time, so. You know, I think it's a, I think it's a fair, I think it's a fair balance. I think it's a good idea, you know. So that's kind of my, my thought on the process.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A couple comments. Thank you, Heather, for this. There was also definition of Breezeville.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just in case you. That was added.
Yes, I forgot to mention that.
Appreciate that as well. Getting back to this, my in most residential districts, Concord are half-acre lots. A half-acre lot, a thousand, over a thousand square foot is almost twenty percent of the lot. In my, notwithstanding where the thousand twenty-four came from, in my just mathematics, it's large, even for a half-acre lot, a thousand square feet. It's just doing the math on a half-acre lot. Let me finish.
An acre is forty-two hundred square feet.
An acre is forty-four.
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-two, five, sixteen to be exact.
Half acre is twenty-one thousand square feet.
Correct? So one thousand is?
Five percent.
Five percent. What did I say?
Twenty.
I meant, sorry, five percent. I meant, let me say twenty. Oh, twenty-two thousand is the half acre, sorry.
Half acre, twenty.
My bad. I meant one thousand of the twenty-two thousand.
It's really not that big, though, a thousand square feet. That's a three-car garage, a little over a three-car garage.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I had, I built, the one I built in nineteen ninety-nine was nine hundred and some square feet. It was a three-car garage with a man door.
Okay, well, that makes sense then.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, so does this apply to Conservation District, where we have a quarter acre lot?
No, we're limited at two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred square feet.
Oh, the next, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, no, so the Conservation District?
Yeah.
And the PUD, those are in a different section. Those are under section sixteen.
Yes.
I believe the definitions would apply. However, there's a different standard and maximum size for the outbuilding in another section.
All right. And then, then lastly, the when I read number eight, to have detached accessory buildings, I see fifteen thirty-two. Yeah, I agree with Hiram. It is very large, but it also seems to be an unlimited number of detached, the way I read it. I mean, so in over two acres, you could have multiple buildings. Two, three, four.
Yes.
Okay, so I would limit, I suggest we limit the number. I also question the fifteen thirty-two. A two-acre lot, fifteen thirty, it's a like Heather said, I don't know where it derives from, perhaps some construction standard might help us to get this to some standard. But it's, it seems like it's a multiple that could be there on a, over a two-acre lot. That's what.
I don't have a problem limiting the buildings.
I'm sorry?
I don't have a problem limiting the building, the number of buildings.
The number.
Right. I don't have a problem putting a limit on it.
Do we say that the number of the buildings can't add up to more than fifteen thirty-two?
Eh.
I think that's what it's.
That's what it says.
I think that's the intent of what it's, maybe it's not perfectly stated, but in other words, you can't have multiple accessory buildings each at fifteen thirty-two.
Oh, no, I'm just saying multiple three hundred square foot sheds. I mean, if you have five of them, it doesn't make sense to me if they're on a two-acre lot. We should limit the number.
A five-acre or a ten-acre lot, I mean, then it might not be a big deal.
I don't know.
If it were a farm.
If it were a farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, but do we have any farms? In Concord? I think so.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are some farms in Concord, but if you remember, if that farm is over five acres, they don't have to comply with any zoning.
Right.
We would still request that they let us know what they're doing, so we can review it and make sure that we agree that it's exempt agricultural use, but I, I mean, there's some, some older existing farms, like the Corn Popper Farm, I know they're going to reuse those barns, but those are already there, and they're over the five acres. Again, we can only regulate ag in, you know, in certain areas and subdivisions where you're going to have those half-acre lots, maybe acre lots if they're an older subdivision, or in areas where there's been more than fifteen lot splits on properties adjacent to one another.
Yeah, I think, and I think Rich brings up a good idea, because, you know, I, you know, the, sometimes the intended consequences don't always pan out, you know, we try to go, next thing you know, you like, like you guys, you got a guy, somebody told him five three hundred square foot or thirty square foot buildings, you know, it's like, if you want that, too? I mean, do you really want to go down that path, or?
Or multiple fifteen hundred square foot.
Right. Well, and you know what, I get it, you know, I look at, you know, you look at different things, and you say, if you put it, if you put a hard limit and you say just one, okay, then you know, then you got something that could come up, and there's potential for somebody, you, maybe they, just for conversation's sake, not that it would apply to me, but maybe they wanted to put it like a smokehouse, a small, which is tiny, small footprint, but it's, it's another building. So do you want to see you can only have one, and then they want to put a smokehouse in, then they're like, I got the room, I've got the ability, but I'm limited to one building, and the one building is the big building, and now I want to put a small building that's.
Right, but they could go for a variance.
That's what the VZA for.
Right.
Yeah.
A variance is always the option.
Yeah, there's been many variances on some properties that have maybe, that only have a detached garage. Older properties where they used to build the, you know, the garages were detached from the homes, and then those kind of older properties are flipping, and younger people are buying them, and now they want to shed. But they're only allowed to have the one outbuilding, and that's their garage. So that's definitely something that comes up quite frequently from the VZA on.
I'd be careful on the, I'm okay with the limit, but I'd be careful on what that number would.
Right.
What do you envision that number being?
Well, I don't know, maybe it's a total, like if you were to.
Or do you go, do you limit to square foot? No, because if you limit to square footage, then that option, that leaves a window open for a lot of little buildings. So do we want to, so do we want to say that, put a limit on the number of buildings? What's, what's the, what's the legal ramifications of something like that?
I mean, it would only be prospectively, you know, carried out, and so whoever has these in existence right now, as long as they're compliant, they're not going to be affected now if they want another building. That will be an issue. They'll probably have to comply, and they'll be already at the limit, probably.
Right.
So. Yeah, that's, that's really the legal issues.
What about temporary? Did we cover that?
No, our resolution does not make a distinction between a temporary building and a.
I'm just thinking of like those carports, those, you know, those, those can, or what, not canvas, or plastic, you know.
The canvas-sided carports, those meet our definition of building generally, because they have walls and a roof, and.
That's what I'm saying, do we have provisions for that? I mean, do we have?
We don't treat them any different than we would a more permanent in nature type of construction, yeah. It would.
Right, they're considered an accessory.
Yeah.
So they have to comply.
Yeah.
Okay.
In our definition, a carport is any parking space or spaces having a roof but not enclosed by walls and accessory to a dwelling or unit.
Yeah.
Right, okay. That's, that was just, it's kind of like, what if they want to start erecting temporary?
We would, we have that covered, yeah. I've had some people put up like the soft side kind of carports, put the sides down, they use them as outbuildings, and I've definitely enforced that as a building, and.
Or the plastic buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got the proper permits for those, we had to take them down, depending on, you know, what was going on.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
No, I don't like.
Is your fifteen thirty-two still, still a burning question?
No.
No? Okay.
So the, the other suggestion that I had a couple months ago was, you know, kind of related to these accessory buildings, and, you know, if we had lots, two acres and greater, where they're allowed to have the multiple, like, there was, we could require maybe some distance between those buildings. If you guys wanted to look at that standard, maybe not, but I do like what, what Mr. Eiffelies was saying regarding, you know, a lot of the subdivisions are half-acre lots, and it's a thousand square feet. Too big. I mean, do we want to look at these sizes again? Should there be a maybe third category of lot size? I mean, I don't know. Say you have, you're on a half-acre lot, you have a three-car attached garage, do you need a four-car garage in the backyard? Or a three-car? I mean.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I mean, and, and it's not about do you need it, you know, like about your stuff, but it's kind of goes to that, like, lot coverage, and you want to have open spaces, and make sure that people have yards and landscaping, and there's distance between structures, and, you know, you've got that open space, so health, safety kind of things, those are the things that we're trying to remember and focus on when we're writing up these regulations. You know, we don't want someone to completely pave the entire backyard and put up ten gazebo's and, you know, so.
Heather, you said it better than I, that's what I was trying to say. Thousand is two, is very large on a half-acre lot. I'm just, in addition to another three-car garage, it's, it's.
Well, if you look at where the house is, and we say an attached three-car garage, it's already there, and then you look at the side space.
Side yard, yeah.
Side yard, fifteen feet, fifteen feet, rear yard, maybe fifty feet or something like that. This thing's going to be sitting in the middle of your backyard, basically.
Yes, by a half-acre lot or fifty-foot setback.
It's going to the backyard. Yeah.
Come on.
So you're not going to be doing much else.
Yeah.
So what?
Yeah, I don't care.
Right, so what?
Yeah.
That's your choice. I mean, you know, that's kind of the reason why we buy property, right, to do what we want to do?
My lot was a hundred feet wide, and that building only was thirty-five feet, I think, wide, so it just took. I, it just took the back corner, that's all it was. There's a three car garage back there.
You already had a three car?
I had a two up front and three in the back, I had five cars.
And he was looking to put a car wash.
But I'd like to have a six. Now I just have a three, that's it.
Just ask Rich to write this. You might as well. You know what you're wanting, or what you had.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and we have a gentleman here, uh, in attendance this evening, that brought this to our attention. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forget your name, so.
Chris Melgrom.
Chris, Chris, if, if you'd like to step up to the podium and, and, and give your input, if you've listened to some of the comments that have been made this evening, if, you know, I mean, you, I thought you had a, some very interesting input the last meeting, and if you want, if there's some, something you'd like to say, or some, if you have some additional ideas or thoughts, we are always open to entertaining some ideas, so, I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, well, one thing I, I wanna thank you gentlemen for, um, giving this some good thought. Thank you Heather too, for, I know you spent a lot of, I'm sure you spent a lot of time on this, so, that, that is the main thing I wanna talk about, and the other thing is, I, I definitely wanna see this go to completion.
Sure.
So, that's.
But I mean, as far as like the, the conversations on the number of buildings, the square footage, the, the footprint, the, the lots, the acreage, I mean, I know it's a little heady for, you know, but I mean, if, I mean, if you've got some thoughts, I mean, I'd, I'd be interested to hear what you think, that's all.
Oh, okay, um.
Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
I am sorta doing that.
I, 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 I know that, uh, you know, as I, as I drive around town, I, 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 I do see some folks that have, you know, a, a a large collection of equipment, that's maybe their nature. Not necessarily their, their business, but they like, they like the idea of owning a bulldozer, and two pickup trucks, and three trailers, and, and, and I wouldn't wanna limit them, but I don't want it to look like a, you know, what it often looks like.
Right.
I'll let you gentlemen proceed for that.
Super. Well, thank, thank, we appreciate your time, and, you know, you're here, you take the time out of your schedule to, to be here with us, and I, we appreciate that, and that's why if I, if you had some thoughts, or you wanted to share with us, I certainly wanted to give you an opportunity to, to, to.
You don't have to ask me.
My neighbor has got what his wife calls a barn dominium. It's a huge, two-story barn. It's a barn, and it, it's aesthetically nice, no doubt about it, but he's got a lot of toys. And his kids have a lot of toys. And barns are for his side business. He does lawn mowing and stuff like that on his side, so he's got, you know, the big stand behind, or not even walk, but ride behind, you know, triple blade, four, six, eight blade, whatever it is. But, uh, it, it's aesthetically nice, and it's no taller than the house, it's a two-story.
Is there a butt coming?
No. I'm just saying, one of these relates to him.
Yeah.
And the other one relates to Rich.
Well, I, I think, I think in the grand scheme of things, I mean, you know, with regards to a lot of people running businesses out of their homes and things like that, and I, would you rather have the parking stuff in their driveway? You know, or, or out in the open? Or would you rather allow them the opportunity to build a nice, a reasonably aesthetic looking building to put it inside? I'd err to this, let's let them build the building to put it away, versus leaving it out in the yard, you know, sitting out in the open, I think there's a, there's a certain element of, of, you know, aesthetics that go along with that, I would much rather give them a, let them have, build a building and put it in there than to, you know, have them just scattered around, on the lot, out in the open, you know? And a lot of that stuff, I mean, tractors, and bulldozers, and backhoes, and front end loaders, and things like that, certainly can sit out in the weather, that doesn't really affect them too much, so, you know, I'd rather have them all concentrated in a building, and out of, out of, out of sight, out of mind type of thing, you know, that's, so I think we're, I think we're on the right track here, I think we have, we're, we're in the right, we're heading in the right direction with this, so, you know, and we're okay with, uh, you know, the verbiage that, um, that Heather's proposed, uh, for this in the memo, and then, and these, these changes, what, uh, is there anything more we need to do? Uh, do we, do we, do we wanna have another work session on this, or do you wanna make a proposal that we put this on the agenda and schedule a public hearing for this, or how do you wanna have, what, what do you think?
Well, for me, I object to number eight still, like, the way it's written.
I think we might, I think we might need to clarify number eight.
Because of the?
The, first, as Heather acknowledged, where the fifteen thirty-two came from, and the number of buildings.
Okay.
Well, could we do this?
It's open-ended.
Could we say, uh, have detached accessory building, parenthesis S, parenthesis? Saying it could be a fifteen thirty-two one building, but you could have more than one building, all of which do not exceed fifteen thirty-two.
That's the way it reads.
That's the way it is now.
That's the way it reads now.
Well, it says buildings, right now.
Oh, building or buildings?
No, it says buildings.
It says buildings.
Not to exceed a total of fifteen hundred square feet.
So, if you put the S in parenthesis, you're taking, it could be one building, or it could be more than one.
And then is it each can be fifteen thirty-two, or combined they can only?
No.
That's what I wanna clarify.
Well, you could say, not to exceed a total of fifteen thirty-two square feet.
And how many buildings?
Doesn't matter.
Well.
That's what I, that's.
That's the, that's the heartburn of Rich.
Could be five three hundred square foot buildings.
Yes, it could.
Yeah, it's, I.
That's where you gotta put a number on it.
So, do you wanna say two, three? The, where does that leave, Bertie, where does that leave, like, does that expose us unnecessarily? From a, from a legal standpoint, if we put a hard number on it like that?
No, not at all.
If we did, Andy, somebody could still go for a variance if they had a need, you know, so we're not restricting totally.
So, Rich, you have, I mean, you, I think you brought up a valid point. So, what, what, what do you think? What's, do you, you wanna put a hard, do you wanna say one? Or do you wanna say two, or three, or?
I don't, if, we're not distinguishing two acres to twenty, just more than two. I, seven and eight, to me, are the same. We're gonna limit, it's limited eight building, and this is the square footage. One thousand twenty-four, whatever it is.
So, you just want to allow them to have one building?
Yes.
And then if they wanna construct a second building, they can take it to the BZA?
Regardless of the size of the lot.
Is it then, so you take it, which, that would go to the BZA then?
Yeah.
If they wanna build a second building?
Yeah, cause that, that second building, as Heather pointed out, depending upon the site, the distance, spacing, you know, the whole, there's a lot of issues, the BZA could better discern whether that second building is, suits the property.
But you're still limiting it to fifteen thirty-two.
No, I'm suggesting the ten twenty-four. If that is.
For your two acre?
Yes.
On forty thousand, or eighty thousand square feet?
Yes.
Forty, yeah, eighty thousand square feet.
Yes.
Why?
Eighty-four.
One thousand square feet out of eighty thousand?
It, one thousand out of, out of a half acre lot.
That's different.
Okay.
But the two acre lot. You've got eighty thousand square feet, correct?
Yes.
So, that's four times as much space. And you're giving them the same building.
Yes. I, I guess I don't distinguish the size because of not knowing the configuration, the wood, the plantings, the wood, uh, the, the forestry on the, on the lot, uh, they're basically situations, conditions that the BZA would be looking at for additional buildings and additional size, but I, I, I do understand, I can appreciate if we elected to give it larger for two, I just, the size of the lot, it's more like, what is the lot? And where is it, and how is it situated? Is it on a hill, is it on a?
They're all different, that's the problem.
They're all different, they're all different.
Well, we can still select a number for the square footage. And we can still select whether it's one building or two. It's gotta, it's gotta always boil down to, if a neighbor wants to do something, you see, he goes to the zoning board of appeals. I have a neighbor in my development. He has anti cars. Couple years ago, he built a two-story building in the back of his house, half acre lot. From the street, you can't see it. To get to it, this two car garage, one of them goes all the way through.
Through the back.
To the back. All the back is all woods. Neighbors on both sides, and both see all trees. Nobody objected to it.
And so, that's the perfect situation for the BZA to approve?
That's correct.
That's why, that's why.
And that's what I'm saying is, we can put out square footage on it now, or add a number if you want. The other ones will be addressed by the BZA.
Yeah, I would think at least two though, I think two's not unreasonable.
Over two acres?
On, over two acres. And not, you know, fifteen hundred square feet.
Yeah.
Total.
And I'm for that.
And then after that, you go to the BZA.
Exactly.
I'm good with two buildings.
That gives us a little flexibility.
Yes. Yes.
Two buildings, fifteen hundred, fifteen thirty-two cap.
Oh. You just want your, you just want your smokehouse.
He's a half acre.
He, he's in the PUD, so, he's not even in this district.
I'm just talking about, I'm just, I'm just spitballing things here, guys. I've got no agenda.
That's good.
So, two.
I think that's, I think that.
And just to clarify, potentially, two buildings combined, not to exceed a fifteen?
Yeah, two buildings, you can have two buildings not to exceed fifteen thirty-two square feet.
Yeah.
So, would it read?
They need more?
In the R one, R four, R six, and R eight districts, district lots, two acres and larger in area are permitted to have two detached accessory buildings not to exceed a combined total?
Yeah, there you go.
Of one thousand five hundred and thirty-two square feet, unless otherwise.
Bingo.
Right.
Right on the money. You must be an attorney or something.
I just.
Have that verbiage. Okay. Alright. Any other sore points that we wanna address?
Well, okay.
Oh boy, here we go. I shouldn't have asked.
I'm just, we have one, less than two acres, thousand twenty-four. And that number's been around for.
Ever.
Decades. Okay. Now, we have something greater than two acres. Why not twenty forty-eight?
Yeah, cause it's four times the size of a half acre lot. Right?
Okay. But we're saying greater than two acres, so you got eighty-four thousand, or eighty-eight thousand square feet.
Eighty-eight thousand, right.
Eighty-eight thousand square feet, and you're saying.
So, make, make it bigger than fifteen hundred.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to correlate how we got the fifteen thirty-two, nobody knows.
Yeah.
But the ten forty-eight has been there forever.
Ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four, whatever it is.
Yeah.
Ten twenty-four has been there, and now we're talking acre lots, ten twenty-four, two acres and greater, why not make it twenty ninety-six? Or ninety-eight, or whatever.
Twenty forty-eight.
Forty-eight, yeah. I mean.
You're saying twice as large.
Double the size.
Why not four times as large? I mean, by your logic, two acre lots, four times the size of a half acre.
Yeah, but, I mean, where'd the half acre?
R one?
Half acre's a thousand twenty-four.
Less than two acres are permitted to have no more than one detached at ten twenty-four, less than two.
But a half acre can have ten twenty-four.
Which most lots are a half acre, that's my point.
That's our most common lot.
So, is that one, R one, R four, six, and eight?
Yeah.
What, what, what are those sizes? Minimum? Half acre?
Yeah, the R one is the twenty-two thousand square feet, which is point five oh five acres.
That's a half acre.
That's our most common lot in Concord.
So, we're saying for that twenty-two thousand, we're taking, giving them one thousand.
That's where I did that math.
Yeah. And now.
Twenty percent.
Mr. Engineer.
Now, we gotta go to two acres or greater.
Uh-huh.
Which is.
Four times larger.
Yeah.
You only wanna give them double.
Okay, I'm good, no. I'm good with that.
I'm just trying to think some logic, and why would we?
Okay, well.
What number do we pick, and why would it be logical? If you can do this with a half acre?
Well, you have to remember too, two, but two acres itself. Four thousand square feet then. Two acres itself is not relative, because.
I guess, I don't, I don't view buildings as proportional to the land, I, I value the land. In my, I always value the land, green space, more than that, and I, and, and for us to alter a number that's precedent, I don't, again, we don't know the derivation of the fifteen thirty-two, but arbitrarily, arbitrarily just blow it up.
I'm trying to put some logic.
No, I get, no, I understand, but I'm trying to say that logic proportionality is not, it, it doesn't equate in my mind to what we're trying to do.
Exactly, because now you're gonna have a building the size of a huge warehouse. Irregardless if it's on two acres, it's a monstrous looking thing. It's gonna look like an industrial parkway, and that's what you wanna stay with, and so don't.
So, how big should it be? That's the question.
Leave it like it is right now. Keep the sizes relative to the land.
But it's illogical to do that.
Yeah, but you can't.
Here's some food for thought. You know, I, I, I sit on the board revisions for Lake County, and I see tax, I, I deal with, you know, with, with valuations and things like that. Improvements on the lot are, that, that's tax base. Okay, so if you allow, if the outbuildings, even if they get, they, they are assessed, but they're assessed at a different rate than a house would be, but, so if you've got an outbuilding, you're getting, there's tax revenues getting generated for the township with an outbuilding, versus maintaining green space of just nothing but woods, that's not generating any revenue for the, for the township. If we let them put, you know, if we let them put an accessory building on there, that building gets assessed. Okay, and that, that is added to the value, you know, of, it's not the home site, but it's, it's an additional piece of, you know, uh, development on the property that, that, that will add to their tax bill, which then adds to the coffers of the township, so, you know, there, there's some, there's some causal, you know, relationship there between allowing them to build the extra buildings, and, and the, the tax revenue that will be generated by the township, so we also have to think of that, too. We don't wanna cut our, you know, we don't wanna cut ourselves off. You know, in that regard, not that I'm a big tax guy, and, and, and in favor of all those types of things, however, that said, it, you know, I mean, if you allow them to do some improvements to the property outside of the, the main home site, it does become a, a tax, a revenue source for the township, so, I think allowing those extra buildings doesn't hurt. Uh, you know, as long, and again, I think what, what we're trying to do is get a balance of what makes sense and what works, versus just, we don't want the wild, wild west. Cause we know what happens if we allow that. We've got perfect examples.
And I understand Frank's concern, a four thousand square foot building is large.
Huge.
But it'd be two, it'd be two buildings possibly.
Yeah.
But it's, but then again, if you have five acres, or whatever.
But then we're getting back to.
I, I, I like, although I get Hyrum's, I understand Hyrum's point, you've got the thousand twenty-four, okay, and if you want, and if you go to two acre, go to twenty forty-eight, that's not, that's not a, twenty forty-eight's not an out, not a huge addition to the fifteen thirty-two.
That's true.
Okay, it's not, I mean, that's not a, and, and then it's linear. Yeah, so you got this at ten twenty-four, then we got this at twenty forty-eight, now, those two numbers, you can say, oh, I see what they did, they just, two acres or more, they doubled the size.
I think double is.
Well, you say, you come up with fifteen thirty-two, you're like, where the hell that come from? That's a goofy number.
Yeah.
But the twenty, twenty forty-eight is at least linear with the ten twenty-four, makes sense on the lot size, and, and gives, can they have multiple, they have the option for multiple buildings, so they could build a, a, a building, and then build a, an additional smaller building, and, and still be within that two thousand forty-eight, is that, is that reasonable?
But with that, which, which one would take precedence? The twenty forty-eight, or the fifteen thirty-two, or the square footage of the first floor? The twenty forty eight or the fifteen thirty two or the square footage of the first floor?
Well, that.
Can I? Can I build a four thousand square foot garage with a fifteen hundred square foot house?
No, you can't.
No.
That's what we're trying to eliminate.
Right.
Is a garage bigger than the house? Which is what we have on Proudly Road. So if you make it eight hundred square foot house or a twelve hundred square foot house, it can't go bigger than that.
So why do we have the fifteen thirty two?
Well, we're talking about. We don't know.
We don't.
But if, a good sized ranch is a couple thousand square feet, right? So if you went with two thousand forty eight or whatever the number, that seems logical.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I would say even on a smallish sized ranch is twenty, probably twenty, two thousand to twenty two hundred square feet. It would be considered on a small, and a medium, a reasonably sized ranch would be in the, probably the twenty four to twenty six hundred square foot size. That's a pretty big ranch. You know, so, and if you're not, you're, then you've got your, 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 you've, you've got the ability to match that footprint.
Right. So it's proportional then, Hiram. It's proportional to the size of the house. But it's also limited.
It's limited to the square footage of the first floor.
Or the lot size. Can't go more than ten twenty four on a half acre.
He's new to one.
Okay. Okay.
Sound logical?
Yeah. Now. Half acre. One acre. What do I get?
Ten twenty four.
Twenty four. Acre and a half.
Two acres.
Less than.
What do I get?
You get the larger number, twenty, two thousand.
Fifteen thirty two or twenty forty?
Whatever number we come up with.
Why can't I go to the first floor?
Because you've got more property. It's not going to be, you know, you're, you're dealing with a, a much greater land mass.
Okay, I have a two acre lot with a twenty four hundred square foot ranch.
Okay.
What do I get?
Two thousand.
Fifteen thirty two, right. This is right now, fifteen thirty two.
Yeah, fifteen thirty two is what it stands right now.
Why can't I go to the first floor?
It says, it, it says.
No, give me the logic.
So, so the detached could be no bigger than the fifteen thirty two, but the way it's written, proposed in front of you this evening, the attached could be two thousand then?
No, attached or detached is the square footage of the first floor. Attached or detached.
Right, so an attached garage is also restricted to this, restricted in size as it relates to the dwelling, the dwelling first floor living area. So you have, what did you say, twenty four hundred square foot ranch? You have twenty four hundred square foot ranch, the attached garage. Attached garage could be two thousand square feet.
That's crazy.
Could be twenty four hundred square foot garage.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Plus, then you could still have the detached.
Yeah.
Right? So there's plenty of allowances for people to cart their cars.
Why can't we go to the first floor, square footage for attached and detached?
Because you don't want a garage bigger than the house.
I'm not.
Wait, I don't.
You could. If you had an eight hundred square foot house, right?
I have a twenty four hundred square foot garage, I mean, ranch.
All right, but let's go smaller. Sixteen hundred.
Okay.
You can't go bigger than that.
Sixteen hundred. Okay. Garage and detached. One attached and one detached.
Lot size. Half acre or two acre?
Okay, two acre.
Well, then you've got whatever number we come up with here.
Well, why can't we go with the living area of the first floor? Attached and/or detached.
Oh, and just not pick a number.
And not pick a number.
And not pick a number.
Yeah.
It's all relative to the home on the lot. I think what you're saying.
The square footage of any accessory building attached to or detached from the principal building on a lot shall not exceed the square footage of the living area on the ground level of the principal building on the lot. Period. Thank you very much.
It's very large for a half acre lot. We have large homes on half acre lots. Very large footprint. Very large.
You, okay, how, how large? Thirty two hundred square feet?
My house, yeah.
First.
Two stories. Two stories.
First floor.
First floor footprint.
Thirty two hundred square foot?
I don't know.
That'd be sixty.
Seventy by forty foot deep, it's near three thousand square foot, foot, footprint.
On one floor?
Yes. Most homes that have a hundred and fifty foot front, you know, fifteen, twenty foot side yard are seventy foot wide. Most homes are seventy foot wide, forty foot, fifty foot deep. That, large homes in our neighborhoods.
Yeah. Like the homes being built over on Judge's Court.
How big?
Um, those are half acre lots, I mean, and they're seventy percent lot coverage by the time you get the house in the driveway on there. That does not include any kind of patio, outdoor.
That's what I'm trying to say. There's, you're losing green space by pushing more square footage. There's just, that does, there's more value to me in that than, all due respect, income tax.
With tax.
So that's on a half acre lot, twenty two thousand square feet, right?
Yep, yes.
It's just over a half acre, it's point five oh five acres.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Twenty two thousand square foot, and you've got a twenty eight hundred.
Three thousand square foot footprint.
Jeez.
With the garage though.
Yeah, yes.
Take the garage out of there.
Oh, take the garage out. Okay.
Yeah.
So it's more like two thousand. Fifty by forty.
Yeah, what's, what, what did you say is standard three car garages?
A thousand, you said nine hundred.
Well, it's about nine hundred square feet.
Nine hundred?
Yeah, roughly.
For a three car garage?
Yeah.
So, so yeah, if you've got three thousand, you're twenty one hundred square foot house.
Yeah, yeah.
Nine hundred square feet of garage.
Good point, Rich.
Same situation.
And then you, you're not getting close to your side.
Yeah, right against it. I'm on my side yard, fifteen.
How about your backyard?
There are plenty, but we have a conservation easement, why like? There's no, there's no backyard to build in.
Mine's deeper than it is wide. But it's similar.
Deeper than mine, yeah.
Yeah.
Half acre lots typically are a hundred wide by two twenty.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so, so you can't go on the side at all.
No, that's my point about it, because, yes. Yes.
So you gotta knock out the garage.
To, uh, to the earlier point about pushing the addition on the back of the garage and do a drive, you know, drive through the back and attach it to the back. My father-in-law has that on his, his road.
Yeah, actually, they're, they're kind of neat, but that's just out of the point.
Actually, a three car can go seven hundred, seven to nine, depending on the side.
All right, well, what's, what are our thoughts on the fifteen thirty two? Do we want to consider, you know, making a change to that, to the twenty forty eight? Or do you want to leave it at the fifteen thirty two?
I like Hiram's original idea of doubling it. I mean, doubling the ten twenty four. Again, two thousand forty eight. It gives him a little more leeway.
And limit it to two buildings.
And, and, and not to exceed, yeah, two buildings not to exceed two thousand forty.
Totally.
Yeah.
Right, total, between them. Just, they have two buildings.
Yep.
But they're limited to two thousand forty eight square feet.
But then they would also be still further restricted because the combined square footage of those could not exceed the main living floor area of the dwelling.
Right.
Is that how you understand it?
Each building, right, so let's say they have two detached, right, accessories. Each of those buildings cannot, square footage of each of those buildings cannot exceed the square footage of the living area on the ground floor.
Go ahead. Not combined. Yeah.
I think each of the buildings, that's how it's written, each accessory.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I, I got a question here, I guess I don't understand, excuse me for interrupting. Where you have like patio homes or condos, I've seen them where they're like two or three stories tall, and the garage is essentially all on the first floor.
Yeah.
Is the principal floor, you talk about the principal floor being the ground floor.
Living.
Pardon?
Living area.
The living area. Some of those homes don't have hardly any living area on the ground floor. It's all garage.
Oh, living area on the ground.
And now maybe it's a totally different, not residential, so.
Those are usually smaller lots though than a half acre.
Yes.
Like a PUD.
I, I, I know there's, I know there's a new, fairly new house downtown, man, because I used to live there, but I think they built about a three car garage on the first floor, it was a small lot and they had to build up. And there's not even enough living area in the first, there's a little, maybe game room in the first floor.
Right.
But kitchen and living area, bedrooms are all these.
Well, that just means they couldn't have a big garage.
They wouldn't have a place to put it. If you look at Canterbury, look at those lots. Those houses are packed in there.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with twenty forty eight and two.
As long as, the only logic is it's twice the full number we'll do. We inherit it, right? The number that we don't know where it came from, but it's been here forever.
The reason I continue to object that size, I just described my home footprint, two thousand square feet. That's another home on a two acre lot in two thousand forty, I just, I just can't.
Now you've got over eighty thousand square feet.
I, it, it, again, I'm not, it's not relative to the size of the lots.
So you still want ten twenty four?
No, that was the under, this is the fifteen, I, I don't have any reason to object to the square because that's what we've had. I just, mine was the number of buildings, the number. And he suggested two, two up to total fifteen thirty two. Kind of, they're kind of like, okay.
That'll probably happen two or three times in the whole township. You know, as we go forward.
Frank, any comments?
Uh, just like I said, I think first put a limitation on the buildings being two. And then, and the square footage is what we indicated here.
So you want to leave it to fifteen thirty two?
Yeah.
Don't bop to the twenty forty eight?
No, no.
Hiram, how do you feel?
Well, I like to plant trees. I like the environment. I get Rich's point a lot. That, that's starting to work on me a little bit. So the less, the less we have on a acre, a half acre, whatever it may be, the better.
So you want to, you ask, leave it to fifteen thirty two?
I'm, I'm, you're okay going down to ten forty eight?
See that?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
All right.
How, how big is ten forty eight?
It's twenty by fifty, thirty by thirty five.
Thirty. On a half acre lot.
Yes. Twenty by forty.
And even a two acre lot. And even a two acre lot.
Now we're talking thirty by fifty.
Well, that'd be a hundred fifteen.
Fifteen hundred, either two acre, thirty by fifty.
Where'd you get the?
Fifteen thirty, fifteen thirty two.
Thirty times fifty, yeah.
Oh, fifteen thirty two. And you want to stay with the fifteen thirty two?
Only because it's preceded us, I don't, and I don't know that it have any reasonable anguish, angst on that, it's just the number of them.
And you're okay with two? No?
I was okay with one, and he suggested, it's like, you know, it's a world of compromise.
One and a half, right? I, I'm, I'm fine with two, fifteen thirty two. I am.
Rich?
Well, I look at it and say, a thousand square feet on a half acre is, as he pointed, as Rich pointed out, it's five percent of the lot, right? So if we have a two acre lot, we go five percent of that, that'd be four thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Same proportion, okay? I don't want to go four thousand, but I think we, I, I, I think it would be logical to go two thousand forty eight. Just by the same, the logic of that much more land and a little larger building. Four times as much land, two times as much building. That's how I look at it.
Rich?
Yeah.
Hi, Felice?
Yeah. I'm okay with the number seven, the way it's written, number eight, limiting it to two buildings at the fifteen thirty two. Again, going any, even at fifteen thirty two, it seems to be very large. Not relative to the size of the lot, it's just a large space.
Right.
It's a very large space, it's thirty by fifty.
But not everybody builds to that size.
Correct, but it's, it's close to the footprint of a home.
Sure.
Another home, it's another second home.
But it's also two acres of property.
Again.
A lot, a lot of extra space.
Or maybe five acres.
I, I, not, I'm discounting the size of the lot, I just look at the.
Right.
Size of the building.
Another building, another building, that size of the house in the, on the lot.
It's aesthetics you can't.
Might as well make it two blocks, two families.
Yeah, it's the aesthetics you get to.
Yes, 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 it's aesthetics, it's neighborhood, it's the feeling, what you want and the.
That's what I'm saying, it's aesthetics, the neighborhood, that's, that's the thing.
We're not, we're not mentored, we're not going to build, you know, all of these things next to each other, or not. Or not.
But the neighborhoods that have two acres are rare, and.
Yeah, right.
And it wouldn't be that noticeable.
I, again, I, I understand what you're saying, I just don't.
Yeah, my, yeah, that's, that's my, my thought process is the name, is, is the, is the impact on
Neighbors.
adjoining properties, you know, that, that to me is important in this process. I think we got to keep that focus.
Big time.
You know, how that, how that impacts neighboring properties behind and on each side.
Yes.
You know, because more than likely, you're not going to see, like, like you were saying, Frank, you're not going to see it from the street.
Right.
You know, it's, but, but the neighbors that live next door on either side are going to more than likely see it.
Yes.
You know, and people that live behind are more than likely going to see it, so.
Yes.
You know, I, I think that, I'm good with the fifteen thirty two, two buildings. I'm good with that. I like the two, I like, although quite frankly, I'm, I'm not, I wouldn't be opposed if, if the board's, you know, inclination was to go with the twenty forty eight either. I mean, I think that that makes sense, that to me, that's logical, that makes logical sense based on size of the lot and the size of the two acres and the, and the percentages and everything. I think that I follow Rich's thought process on, Rich Peterson's thought process on that. You know, so I, I would be good with the twenty forty-eight, but it seems to me that the, the board is, the majority is more in line with the fifteen thirty-two. And I'm okay with that, I think that's still a substantial building. And if you allow two buildings that are gonna hit that number, that bogey of fifteen thirty-two, then that's okay, cause that gives the person a little bit of flexibility. If they build one building, they have an option to build a second building. If they decide they want a second one, they got a little bit of wiggle room to do that. And, and again, they could always take it to the B Z A, if, you know, if there's a hardship or something, they really feel compelled that it's, they gotta have it. They can always go to the B D, B Z A for approval.
Right.
You know, so, I mean, there's, they have, they, they're not, we're not completely hamstringing them to, to, uh, to be able to do something additional. So I'm...
I, I look at this as a guide. They all, the, the owner has opportunities to take it to the, to zoning board appeals.
Well, and I, and I, and look at the, I think, I think, again, refocus on the intent. Okay, what we're trying to accomplish, because what we had was a building that somebody attached to an existing structure and went hog wild. Okay, so, and that, we want to prevent that from happening. So that's the intent of this whole conversation, is to prevent something that already happened from happening again.
Correct.
Okay, so I think we've accomplished, I think we're accomplishing that, and we're still allowing for some flexibility, which is good.
For the owner.
You know, for the owner, and, 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 and still maintaining that they can't, you know, use some squirrely, you know, loophole in the, in the, in the, in the text or the resolution to be able to get away with something that's egregious. I think we, I think that, I think at the, at the end, the intention of what we're trying to accomplish is, is, is being met, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
So Mr. Chairman, speaking of squirrely, back to Hiram's point, number ten.
Squirrelly.
If, if, I'm rereading what, just, speaking of squirrely. I, attached, the square, it's attached or detached shall not exceed, so if my home, just drop the two thousand square foot living area, right Heather?
Okay.
Two thousand square foot. My attached garage is nine hundred square feet, so.
Like that?
Something like that.
And you're on a half acre lot? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
And, and I'm on a...
Two acre lot.
Two acre lot, thank you. And my permitted to build up to fifteen thirty-two or to have to negate the nine hundred. Or does it negate the nine hundred and only have six thirty-two left?
What?
He's taking the garage out of, he's taking the attached garage out.
It says the square footage attached to or detached shall not exceed the square footage of the living area.
Right.
So if, if the living area is two thousand, in a typical three car garage, say nine hundred square feet, it's attached. Okay? Now, the, so that attached does not exceed the square footage. Right? Of the living area.
Right.
Nine hundred. But I can still do a detached building that doesn't exceed the square footage of the living area as well.
And your detached building can be...
Can be up to fifteen thirty-two on a two acre lot. Right, is that how, that's how I read it, I just want to make sure it's not some squirrely...
Yeah, I don't think we were combining the attached with the detached.
Right.
You're, you're right.
Okay.
So you can add fifteen hundred more, if you had two acres.
So, that was my squirrely question, in case there was some squirrel looking at that, trying to...
That's good that you asked that, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, right? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
You good with that?
You know what, you know what, this is, I think this has been very productive.
Yeah.
I think we've accomplished a lot.
Yeah.
I really do, I think we've, we've come, come up with, I, I think it's been a good conversation. There's been some very reasoned positions on, 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 on the way that this comes together, so I'm, I'm very happy with where we're at in this conversation. I, you know, I think that, I think we worked well together, putting, putting this kind of stuff together.
Yeah.
We have good, good opposing viewpoints and good, good conversation, good minds, so. I think it's, I think we've accomplished what we, what we set out for.
Where do we limit attached garages?
There's no, there's no number, like you were, there's no max number, it's all just relative to the first floor of the home, the living area on the first floor of the home.
Is that number ten?
Basically, yes, maybe we need to separate ten, and I, I was gonna say, maybe we need to work on this a little bit to make it more clear, bring it back based on what we talked about tonight.
Right.
Um, like to talk to Bridie about that, just so, cause I know, like, if we're having questions here, if you guys are, and
Yep.
Then anyone else looking at this too.
Tighten that up.
Yeah.
And I think if we can do that and have that ready for the next, the next meeting.
So if we need to be more clear, like, okay, the attached garage cannot exceed the ground floor, and then as a separate item, then also detached, you know, if we need to separate that out to make it more clear.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, because ten is, is, number ten is accessory building. And, and attached garage is not an accessory building.
Right.
Okay, so we have to, we have to clear that one out, we have to, we have to identify the restrictions on an attached garage.
Right.
Separate. Done, that's it.
But to answer his question, when he got to his particular house, he's got X amount of square feet total, part of that is a three car garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
So his accessory building or any addition would be based on the rest of the house, not the garage part of it. The living space.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he'd be, he'd be limited to fifteen, whatever our number is, fifteen thirty-two.
Yeah.
If he had two acres.
Yeah.
As it is, he'd be limited to a thousand twenty-four, cause it's got a half acre.
Right.
If you could squeeze that in. I think you could.
Yeah.
But Hiram, the, the intent of changing some of the definitions was to make sure that we could enforce an attached garage as an accessory building. So that's why these definitions are proposed to be modified. So an accessory building is a use that is subor, is a subordinate building or use located on the same lot in which the principal building or use is situated, and which is customarily incidental to the conduct of the principal building or use. So on an R one lot, what is the principal building or use? The single family dwelling.
Yes.
Right?
Right.
And then we also changed garage.
Right, and then we changed the definition of garage, just to state.
An accessory building.
Right, right, okay, yep.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll go back to the squirrel question.
Yes.
So on a two acre lot, in the two thousand square foot living area, I could have a fifteen hundred and thirty-two foot attached garage.
Correct.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
But you got a two acre lot.
And a fifteen thirty-two square foot detached garage.
Correct.
Or both.
Right.
But that, that's how it is right now.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's not a change.
Yeah, that's what it is now.
That's current.
Yeah. Are we trying to?
And we're trying to change it, yes.
Wait, are, are, are you confused?
No, it's, no, we're, we're, we're getting into a cyclical.
Fifteen hundred thirty-two square foot garage on a two acre lot, and then another fifteen hundred thirty-two building, accessory building.
Correct. Cause it's not exceeding the, the, the square footage on the first floor of living space.
But we're trying to get away from, it would not be bigger than your, your garage would not be bigger than yours.
So you could, you could build, say, you could, really, I mean, if, if a three car garage is nine hundred, approximately, nine hundred square feet. Okay, so if you, like
Rich has five cars in the fifteen.
If you wanted to do a four, you know, a four car garage, for instance. Okay, you're probably right up against that fifteen hundred square foot.
Yeah, we'd get you five cars.
And I, and I don't think a four car garage is anything extraordinary on a, on a, on a three thousand square foot house. I don't think a four car garage is on the question, I don't think it's aesthetically odd or weird. Yeah, so I think that, you know, I, I think that, I think that fits.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that fits. I don't see that many people building fif, when they build a new house, they're not building a fifteen hundred square foot garage on that. It's usually a three car garage, typically, two car, three car, and maybe somebody, you know, if I, four car, you could make a case for a four car garage.